For our indication, we call upon one of our own, United States Army veteran, one of my district mates, Commissioner Pierce for pleads of allegiance, but we'll begin with Commissioner Means for our indication.
That's great. Father, we thank you for who you are, for being on the throne. You are righteous and you are good and you are holy. From the stars in the sky to the hairs on our arms, you made it all. The Lord, we just ask that you help us to be good stewards of what you've laid here before us, that we would remember that we're not in control, that we're just here to do your work. The Lord, I just ask that you would just be with this meeting this evening, that you'd be with each and every citizen and each and every person within soul and heaven, in Jesus name, amen.
Commissioner Pierce.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As every member recorded, a prayer. Looks like we've added a few commissioners, we've got 28 seats.
It's called jury mandarin.
Yes. Looks like they're all from down my neighborhood. Matt Burge, what do you read? Hey, Matt Burge, we have a full house and a full attention. Before we get started into whole business, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Vanover to tell us a little bit about our guest speakers next week, the Appalachian Producer Association. So I'd like for him to tell us a little bit about that.
Just for information's sake. Just for information's sake, this speaker's next week will be from the Appalachian Producers Association. They're walking in there. I'm sure they're not here just to get information, of course they're seeking funding for a processing facility for livestock in Washington County. And they're here to talk about that and try to secure some funding. And I just want to give you a chance to take the bad over to the next week, but two things I want to tell you about. Remember when COVID struck, people reached their grocery stores, they saw some bare shelves, they got a little bit food insecure. I think this is something that could help us have a regional facility the next time that happens, and it's going to happen again, I'm sure. So that would be one advantage of it, I think it would kind of take some pressure off of the supply chain next time we have another food insecure time. Secondly, I know it's in Washington County and we wouldn't be getting the tax base off of it, but that's not always a bad thing when it comes to slaughter facility. Nobody wants to go in their backyard to begin with. So I'm sure we have some property, maybe industrial parks, and maybe later down the road we could do a satellite station in the future if things work out with this one. So that's why they're coming. One of the angels she helped with the extension agent in Washington County. The other gentleman is like the temporary CEO and the other gentleman is a farmer that farms in both Washington and Sullivan County both. So that's why they're coming. Just give you a heads up and think about that for next week. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
You want to have any questions for Commissioner Vanover? Thank you for that, for that explanation. I very appreciate it to know he's coming in the business. Before we move into old business, I'm going to... Actually, some technical... Are you saying that the sound's not going...
Yeah, out over the speakers.
Out over the speakers.
Yeah.
So Bobby's operating it from a distance.
Well, he sets it.
We'll...
I'll see what he says.
We'll continue. Right now, we'll go into recess for the purposes of a public hearing, a public comment. And I have a list of people that wish... Excuse me? Are we recording? We're recording, right?
I'm assuming it is. He sets it up, so it's recorded here, so it shows recording here.
Yeah, I'm going to begin with public comment. When you come up, state your name and your address. And you're going to be given three minutes for public comment. This is not a question-answer session. This is not a debate session. This is the commission's opportunity to hear from you, the public. So I'm going to begin asking Phyllis Mullins, if you will come up.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Mullins. I live at 569 Dix Springs Road, Bluff City, Tennessee. You first heard from me in May of this year, when Mr. Larry Roberts at 335 Eden Park Drive, Rockville Base, Georgia, was petitioning the permission to rezon land he evolved at 1653 Bull Collar Road in Bluff City. Let me refresh your memory about this. I was opposing the rezoning as my property is directly across the river. Mr. Corey Roberts attended the meeting and said he had no intentions of moving on this property, but wanted to use the house on it for his vacation purposes. He also wanted to rezon three acres from A1 to AR to build two winded paths. He stated no trees would be removed from the land, only a walking path would be used by the cabin renters to get to the river. These were in the notes of your meeting. That day on this, that day on this, as of 11/10/22, is the road has been constructed into the cabin site. Trees were cut down to do this. A road, not a walking path, was constructed down to the river. And now, on 11/10/22, Mr. Roberts has petitioned the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation to construct a 13-by-20 cement boat ramp on the South Fork and the Houston River. The file number is NRS22... None for. This means that it's not a walking path, like he said. Trucks and boats will be using this path to access the river. I should mention too that the TVA Dix Springs Boat Ramp is located up the river a little over 600 feet on the opposite side from this proposed site. As you can see, you approved the rezoning of these areas. The people do not care what they say in the meetings to you or told you. They do what they want after they get out. During the meeting in May, the commissioner stated that something needed to be done to stop this area from being overrun with cabins and daily rental places, so it would not become another Pigeon Forge or Gatlinburg. Commissioner said, "We will vote for this one, but it needs to be addressed in the future if there are other cabins petitioned to be built in this area along the Houston River." Well, the time has come for you all to stand up and to do something. I'm again writing you in opposition of this rezoning land from R1 to RRC for the construction of cabins on short-term rentals. This one is scheduled to be heard by the commissioners on December 15th. The physical location of the property requested to be rezoned is 288 Old Weaver Pike Road. It is located two miles from my property. This property is located right in the middle of residential family homes and a church. It is on a small rural road that has been subjected to more traffic from short-term renters, renting places already used on the river now, and fishermen and boaters using the two TVA boat ramps on this stretch of the Houston River.
Ma'am, if you can wrap it up in a few seconds.
A few more seconds. But the people using the roads are now using roads on the new middle school that has opened up. There's no room for parking along the river where they wish to place a dock. I would ask you to come and see the road area for yourself. Drive in, experience the hazards that you would open up with this rezoning. It will give you a clear understanding of why the community is taking this stand against this rezoning.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your comments. Next is Sue Schreiner. Did I butcher your name?
Oh, you did well.
Oh, thank you. I get one every now and then.
My name is Sue Schreiner and I live at 1573 River Cyc Road in Bluff City. The proposed zoning change will totally affect my life. We bought the property that's adjacent to where the proposal for short-term rental cabins is currently being considered. Our property was purchased in a rural residential tranquil area that we'd like to see stay that way. Our hope was that we were never going to leave this area. Short-term renters are not going to have any consideration for the property or the community. They're going to come and they're going to go, and they're not going to vote, and they're not going to care what happens here. I don't think that having a business come into a rural residential community is good for anybody here. And I strongly urge you to recommend that this not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming. Betty Cogan. Thank you for coming up this evening.
Hi, I'm Betty Cogan. I live at 2085 Bull Collar Road. And they've pretty much covered mainly, I think, the main concerns. I can't stand up here and say we don't want short-term rentals because I own some. And I came through you all, I had mine approved, and I've worked with you all extensively with them. And I think the biggest concern we have is the conservation of the river and the overpopulation of it that seems to be happening without any control. We see a lot of things going on that we don't really think are good for the community or for the river. And we just hope that you all will look at it as conserving that river and then still being there for everybody. Now, I'm a fifth generation here on the farm that I'm on. And we build cabins to subsidize the farm because it is, you know, farming is getting harder and harder. So we just ask that you look at it and just help us conserve it. We're not against growth. We understand growth. We embrace growth. But we really just hope that we'll do it in a way that conserves the area that we're in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob Light.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. I'm opposing the rezoning of 288 Old Weaver Pike. I've got a place at 298 Old Weaver Pike. The reason I'm proposing that is the road conditions. If they get rezoned, it's six acres, they could be 12 houses put on that. And I don't know what their intentions are. It hadn't been expressed, but I know they want more. In one letter to the board, they said they would be building more. They are remodeling one. They're in the midst. They've got it tore out and redoing it and taking the walls out. The road will not handle that much more. If you're familiar with Weaver Pike, Old Weaver Pike and Riverside, it's an intersection area that about four roads comes into that. And it's real curvy. It's dangerous. And if they build some on Riverside, which they will, it's got about 200 feet or 300 feet on the riverside. They'll bring roads off and Riverside can't handle the extra traffic. Also, they want to put a dock on the river. Now, I own about 50... My calculation, 52 feet of riverfront where they go park. You can't park along the road there. It's been a problem. It's other neighbors. Forrest lives there, been there for several years. He's had a problem keeping people from parking on his property. But we'd appreciate... I'll be at the meeting next week. I've been to the two before now. And I'll be there and oppose it. We've got several people. We had 18 people to last meeting on this. How many people here are here about this? We've got several here now. So there's plenty of people opposed it because they love their neighborhood and love their community. We appreciate any consideration y'all can make on that.
Please, please, Phyllis. Phyllis. Get EMS down here. Right now, I really do appreciate everything that you did to help expedite that. And Commissioner Mark, he was very expedient to go over there and be giving help. He's actually, if you didn't know this already, he's actually one of the best DMTs you'll ever, you'll ever, when you're in a situation like that, you really don't want anybody to be in with you. But that's really common saying, Southern County has a lot of great people in that role. Hunter's definitely one of them. Frank, he's here with us. So, once everybody gets back in here, we'll just start. Forgive me, who was, at public comment last, who was? Well, hey. Had you, you had finished correct.
Do what?
You had finished correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing I'd like to mention about where this is over, the water comes from the school and the trailer park above where they're going to try to rezone this, is a gully down through there, and it creates a river when it's raining. And it gets, the gully gets stopped up and the county has to come back and unstop it or the individuals that lives there have to unstop it. Two houses or three, it's in danger of getting washed away. And that happened. Thank you.
I'll ask David McKee, please, please come forward, public comment.
You would do that to me right after that, wouldn't you? I'd like to make a suggestion if I may, before I get any further, sir. I would like for someone here to have a prayer for this lady and this family before we continue. Would that be appropriate, sir?
It would. We can have a, without objection, would you like to have a moment of silent prayer for ourselves? Because there's been, there's been a lot of it going on in here already. There has.
All right, thank you.
Amen.
Okay. Let's, I guess now I'll give you.
We have your address?
No, I didn't tell you. David McKee, 30012 Smith Chapel Road, Maryville, Virginia. And I apologize, I know some of y'all are probably getting tired of seeing my face, but a lot of the campers at Observation Mall are going to be going to fight for which right and try to get something accomplished. And we do appreciate all the efforts that are being put forward on your own part to try to get to that point. We do appreciate that. I want to give you some information first. Last week, I spoke with the chairman of Washington County Virginia Park Authority, Ben Castell. I see this as being related because their representative from TVA is also Mr. McNutt. And as of last year, well, Rebecca, their original lease began in 1971. So, last year, 2021, they did their 50-year anniversary. Their rules were, rules and regulations were rewritten last year in December of 2021. And after going through those, it's obvious that they adopted a lot of the TVA recommendations, but they did not adopt all of them. Today, I was able to speak with Tony Felty. He is the Washington County Virginia Park Manager, and he was extremely helpful. And if any of y'all so choose, I'm sure he would be more than happy to talk to you up. But he stated in conversation that they have not adopted two portions of the TVA recommendations, and the reason being because they thought they were going to be extremely hard to implement and it was going to be very hard on the camping public. So, at this time, they have not adopted the two-week shutdown or moving of the campers. Three other additional facts that he gave me today, because that's what I'm trying to do, is provide you all some facts. Decks are still allowed at Washington County Park. They are not, there's been a rumor that they were going to full-time. They are not. But tonight, they're having a meeting, and most likely, he said, they will be raising their rates for the seasonal campers. Give me just a second here to get my thoughts together. When something like that, I too have been a past DMT and intermediate, and so has my wife, and when something like that happens, I'm just straight line and focused on what's going on.
If you could, sir, you've reached three minutes, you could just wrap it up in a few seconds.
All right, I've got one more. I've got to say real quickly, I've talked to several campers to try to get a consensus on what has gone on. The previous two years, 2020, 2021, we can only remember one camper getting kicked out because of a rules violation, and either two or three other campers getting a warning because of a party. This year alone, there have been 14 either kicked out or left on their own accord because of the treatment of the current campground management to them personally. I'll quit on that.
Thank you very much, sir. Last one on our list, Geneva Lester. Give us her, give us your name and your address, please.
Sure, my name's Geneva Lester, I live at three hundred Sleepy Hall Road in Bristol, Tennessee, and I'm here also for Observation Knob. And I think what we feel, I am not currently a camper there, but I was a previous camper for six years out there, and I, I left just for family reasons. I have been on the list for a year to try to get another site out there, because I do love camping and our family enjoys it. However, every time that, you know, there's a drawing, or supposed drawing, you know, you just don't get drawn. I would like to see, you know, those drawings to be public to where we can actually see if we are in that list. I think that would be important, just for transparency. I think the, there was issues, I know when we were there with the fifty-fifty raffles that were going on for the fireworks, you know, they would come by and ask for donations for the fireworks, and then they started having the raffles. You know, I know Mark Vance headed that up, you know, and I'm not sure how that was handled, but, you know, I would like more details on, on that if possible. You know, because I know that they charge to get into the campground, it's for all of Sullivan County, you know, but we, as campers being out there, you know, were still asked to make those donations and to do that fifty-fifty raffle, so, you know, I don't know if it's a, you know, if that would be a conflict, because he was on the board and everything at that point, so maybe he was allowed to do that, I don't know. And I think what we're asking is for the campground director, just to be more fair to everyone out there. I know that people feel targeted, I know that people have been targeted out there. And so, I think in that, you know, we, we'd like to see a committee of the campers themselves to assist the Observation Knob Committee, you know, so you can have like an inside look. I know it's hard to get out there, you know, for you to physically go out there and see what's going on. So, maybe if you had a group of people that was nominated to go out there, you know, to assist your board, I think that that would be a good thing as well. It might be, if you could consider that. And the TVA, I think he just addressed the TVA. My question was going to be, you know, has anyone from the committee actually spoke with the TVA, you know, to see, you know, if those, any of those changes, you know, have to be made, or are they just recommendations? What are the other campers doing? And I think he addressed that. You know, I do thank you for everything that you put into this issue, I know it's important to a lot of people, you know, the day campers that, that come out there, but also the seasonal campers. You know, they invest a lot of money, you know, in their sites for, you know, because they have to put in their own gravel and, you know, do their own upkeep, and, you know, most of those, you know, are kept up well. And I will reiterate, as far as when I was out there the five years, we didn't have a lot of people kicked out, you know, because people, you know, did what they were supposed to do. And I think if you come back to this previous year and you go, you know, to the ones that have actually been evicted, you know, through the previous years, you will see a big difference, and I think that'll tell you a big story. But thank you again for listening to us.
Thank you very much, ma'am. That finishes the list for public comment. So, the pub, the public comment portion of tonight's agenda is closed without objection. We'll move into our regular agenda, beginning with item number two in Old Business. Recognize Commissioner Cole on item number two. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. This resolution is for twenty-eight new vehicles for the sheriff's office, which is projected to cost up to one million five hundred fifty thousand. This is to be repaid over a four-year period. I want to reiterate, this is no new money, this is coming from the budget. In speaking with Mr. Bailey earlier today, it looks like, I know in the resolution it says a four-year lease or capital outlay note, it looks like we're going to go with the bank note, as the interest rates will be cheaper. Disregard the waiver of the rules, it will be on second reading.
You've heard the explanation, anyone have any questions or comments for Commissioner Cole on the resolution? Mr. Jones, I'm trying to click your name here. It's, I think, I think my mouse is. There we go.
Mr. Cole, we do have a, it's a standing resolution that when a vehicle is purchased and one's supposed to be turned in, do we know how many are planning on being turned in for these twenty-eight?
I don't know if that's just for the resolution, where's?
No, it's, it's, it's not part of this resolution, that's just part of the history of procedure. I just have that made provision to turn in.
If I'm not mistaken, if that's not, that was part of the lease, since we're doing a capital outlay or a bank note.
No, it, it was for any vehicle we purchased in the county, any department, there was supposed to be one turned in.
Mr. Sam Cox, do you wish to address this, your moral of him, sir?
Yep, we, we have right now about twenty-six ready to turn over to parks.
Good.
With about fifteen more that, once the insurances and all this stuff gets done with it, they'll be stripped. It just takes a while, we've got to strip all the police equipment, all the markings, and do all that kind of work for them.
Yeah, and that's good to know, I just wanted to make sure we were following that procedure, and then they'll go on the government website.
Yeah, we'll turn over the parks, and they'll put them on the gov deals and stuff.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
There's no further question. So, we'll hear this, we'll hear this again next week at our regular commission meeting. Without objection, recognize for item number four, excuse me, item number three, Commissioner Cowton, Commissioner King's on here, so we'll recognize Commissioner Cowton, who co-sponsors on item number three. Oh, you wish to do it, Commissioner Glover? Commissioner Glover, you're recognized on item number three.
If I could back up a minute to item number two, Commissioner.
That's fine.
Larry, I don't understand, I think these vehicles needs to be ordered, and I think they're ready to, to be sent. I'm asking if, if we should keep them on waiver of rules to go ahead and get them coming for the sheriff's department. I spoke to.
We only have first reading, Larry.
At first reading, yes. I, I talked to Mr. Sam Cox and asked him some questions about the vehicles, and he answered the questions, and, and I, I think it's something that would, that needs to happen to move forward.
The quotes I received from the banks and the interest rates were to be bank-qualified and to be issued before December thirty-first of this year. So, keep the interest rate from going up on us, if you approve them next week, that should be made very manageable.
Okay, all right. Okay. Commissioner Cowton, you'll, President will recognize you on item number three.
Okay, these are property, I don't know how many sell this one here, but they go through the delinquent tax, and the reason they do, many of them spent in sales, and they haven't been able to sell them, or, you know, to sell properties, so we didn't get any tax money from it, but after spending a seller too, then they go into the delinquent tax, and then people offer us money for it, and I think everyone got a copy of what we were asked for, so I asked you to vote for this and let us go forward with it.
Commissioner Cowton moves place item number three on consent counter. Any objection to item number three being placed on consent counter? Without objection, item number three is placed on consent counter. I'm going to, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Commissioner Cross, if you're, you're going, I'm going to recognize you on item number four, and you're also on item number six, would you be opposed to taking items number four and six together? Then I'll recognize Commissioner Jones on item number five, unless you would like to roll all these delinquent taxes together, and we can do four, five, and six at, at one time, because the explanation is the same. Anyone object?
I would ask that number five be on consent.
Commissioner Cross, would you like to place item number four, number six on consent as well?
Yes, sir, the only thing on item number six, we have a top, I guess just top area. At the top, we've got eleven civil district, and at the bottom, we've got the twelve.
In the resolution, it says twelve, but in the explanation, it says eleven, so that...
So, it is, it is twelve, correct?
It's in the twelve, it's actually the twelve.
Okay, so, that's, and I'm ready to consent on that also.
So, so, so to be clear, items number three, four, five, and six, all the link with property tax resolutions will be placed on consent, consent agenda three, four, five, and six. That brings us to New Business, recognize Commissioner Glover on item number seven on New Business.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. This, this resolution is to work with Sullivan County and the industrial site in Tri-State Industrial Park, requesting compensation for a sewer line expanded to their site in an amount of ninety-seven thousand seventy-five dollars. This is for the Robinet Company in Piney Flats. If you all remember, about five or six months ago, we done two tax bases for, Gosling was one of them, and the other one was Robinet Company. And this sewer line has to do with the growth and expansion of Robinet Company. The cost of the installation of the site is ninety-seven thousand seventy-five dollars. That will be invoiced from Baker Construction for installation of a line along Corrugated Road for the Robinet Company. And that's got to do, I'll try to have Clay and Walker here maybe next week to give us an update on that expansion for Robinet Company, I think it's two-hundred-and-some jobs, or maybe a little bit more than that, that's going to come from this process. So, that's, that's what this is, is for.
You've heard the explanation on item number seven. Any member have any questions or comments for the sponsor on item number seven? Recognize Commissioner Glover, final, final word on item number seven.
Got this on waiver of rules requested, I think this is something that we have to get done before the end of the year also, so if there's any questions on that, Commissioner King will be here next Thursday night, he's been out of town tonight on a trip, so he'll be here next Thursday, and appreciate your consideration on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Glover. Without objection, move on to item number eight, and I'll keep your mic on, Commissioner. Oh, you turned it off. Commissioner Glover, you're recognized as well on item number eight, sir.
This resolution is to appropriate funding for the Office of Sullivan County Trustee. Whereas with the change of the administration in Sullivan County Trustee's offices of September first, two thousand twenty-two, Angela's title has made various changes to update computer equipment and become compliant with state law. And whereas chapter number two thirty-seven, House Bill number six seventy-six of the sixty-eighth General Assembly established a private act that stating the county trustee is to receive and collect taxes only in his or her office in the courthouse at Blountville, and at his or her offices in the city of Kingsport and Bristol. Therefore, in order to be compliant with the referred, referenced Private Act enacted by the Tennessee Legislature, offices have been reopened in Kingsport and Bristol locations. Whereas in an effort to be most efficient with the use of taxpayers' monies, these offices will be open seasonally throughout the tax season, this year beginning December first, two thousand twenty-two, through the end of March, two thousand twenty-three. The Kingsport office located at two twenty-five West Center Street, Old City Hall, being open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and the Bristol office located at eight oh one Anderson Street, Bristol Justice Center, being open on Thursday and Friday. Adjustments at the time periods may be made based on the timing of, of the loading of the next tax roll each year. And whereas prior administration disposed of or allowed other departments to have possession of equipment furnishings originally housed in the two locations, all equipment maintained in the trustee's office possession previously used in these locations has been moved to satellite offices and for reuse. And whereas in addition to the above, it was recently discovered that all the Tennessee, that all the trustee's next-gen software, trustee's tax payment software, is backed up to a server maintained by local government corporation. The office computer storing critical financial data used for reconciling the county's amounts and storing general office documents data is not backed up to any such device. Therefore, the office is in critical need of a backup device to enable the ability to restore or recover all documents essential to the function of the trustee's office. The satellite offices will be required to have backup any data via flash drive on a weekly basis. And whereas the trustee's office contracted with County Record Services, the vendor responsible for mailing our tax notices prior to the end of the year, fiscal year, postage rates increased, causing an increase to the amount originally covered for the printing of service and postage. Therefore, it be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Sullivan County is in record session hereby appropriate twelve thousand dollars to the account five two four zero zero, Sullivan County Trustee. This amount will be divided between object codes three hundred and four hundred for the code destination of the specific purchase and postage expenses referred to above. The most important thing about this resolution is getting the software in the office of trustee to back up the computers of everyday use for the protection of the taxpayers of the county. As of right now, we don't have any protection as far as storing data that's collected during the day.
You've heard the explanation on item number eight, anyone have any questions or comments for the sponsor on item number eight? Mr. Iverson, sir, you're recognized. Just want to make sure, it says appropriate is twelve thousand, is that new money that's coming into it, and if so, where's it coming from?
That twelve thousand will come out of the general fund into that county.
Okay.
And the software, if anybody's got a question about that software, I've talked to Bobby Rannan today about it, next week, he will be able to explain what that software will do and how it will protect us.
Commissioner Jones, you're recognized, sir, then Commissioner Carr.
I would like to ask trustee if we could not, if we're going to do the backup, that we do it on a daily instead of a weekly, in that, six, one, two, three, four, five, six, five, fifth paragraph.
I can ask her that.
If we're going to this, going to do this, could I be backed up daily?
Yeah, the daily backup will be in the trustee's office, she's talking about weekly in the satellite branches of Bristol and Kingsport.
Okay.
That's what she's talking about.
Okay.
That will be stored on the flash drive. But I can, I can pose that question to her and see if she wants to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Recognize Commissioner Carr, then Commissioner Locke.
I just had a question about, it says we're going to be backing them up via flash drive, like, just for security purposes, you know, whether someone were to, you know, lose a flash drive with all the county's financial, you know, data on it, you know, how bad would that be?
I can ask that question to Angela to see if we can do it through another process. I know right now, most of the stuff is put on a tape, and it's put in the bank each day.
Okay.
For storage and for protection, so if there's another process that we can do for safety, we'd be happy to put that in there for you.
Absolutely. Thank you, that's all I have.
Recognize Commissioner Cross.
This is probably a question for Bobby, if he's here next week, but it'd be possible, and this opens up another security issue, I know that, but as far as being multiple branches, is there a cloud service with security we can employ where each one, but I know that's probably a Bobby question, I just want to put that in your, in your mind.
He's already got the software for Angela, not just the information he's got for.
Awesome.
We haven't ordered, I mean, she hasn't ordered anything, but he has already gave her all the information that she needs and what she needs to be put in place for this.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay.
That clears the board, recognize Commissioner Glover for final comments on item number eight.
That's, that's all I have, I, I spoke to... That's, that's all I have, I, I spoke to Angela about this today and I know that some of the commissioners that's come in has had questions about bringing stuff in at the last minute and apologize for bringing this in at the last minute, but this is something that's very important. We're collecting a lot of money right now, there's a lot of tax money coming into that office and I feel like this is something that we need to act on pretty quick and get that stuff in place for her. I think we do have it on waiver of rules, we can do that. Okay? We'll do waiver of rules. I think it's got new money in it and I don't think we can put anything with new money on it.
You're, you're, you're.
So, we'll put it on waiver of rules and...
Run item number eight on waiver of rules at our regular commission meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Glover. Without objection, item number nine, recognize Commissioner Locke on item number nine.
This resolution establishes open underpayment policy in the Office of Southern County Trustee. This is for under over one penny to five, five dollars. Uh, Board of Southern County Commissioners, Simple Regular Session hereby proestablishment over and under policy for the Office of Southern County Trustee. This is the same policy that we're, I guess, piggybacking Rutherford County, they already have it in place that works well with them. All we're doing is helping the trustee's office out for over and under anything from one penny to a five-dollar bill and I ask this to be consented.
Commissioner Locke moves, item number nine, item number nine be placed on consent counter. Anyone have any questions, comments for the sponsor on item number nine, Attorney Street? You're recognized, sir.
I was reading this and it says of amounts in excess of... Or less than five dollars. If you're saying five dollars or less, that wouldn't be correct, would it, Commissioner?
What overpayment is any payment received in amount from one cent to five dollars? That's an overpayment. Underpayment is anything less than five dollars. So, if you go to the back page and go to overpayments, it's a payment received in amount of one cent to five dollars.
Okay.
So, we're, we're addressing both overpayment and underpayment.
Okay. And anyone else have any questions for sponsor on item number nine? Without objection, item number nine is placed on consent counter. Thank you, Commissioner. That finishes up our regular agenda, does anyone wish to be recognized for, uh, personal comments or any announcements? Seeing none, entertain motion to adjourn. All those in favor?